America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. There are a few announcements. So the announcements for January nine, 2024, and Happy New Year are as follows. The Select Board is looking for interested residents to fill vacancies on the following boards and committees. The Agriculture Commission, the Cable TV Oversight Committee, Council on Aging, Grafton Cultural Council, Historic District Commission, Historical Commission, Veterans Advisory Committee, and Waste Reduction and Recycling Committee. You can apply on the website or write a letter of interest to TA Office at grafton-ma.gov by Thursday, January 18th, and we'll get you on the next agenda. The Economic Development Commission is hosting Grafton business owners in a meeting on January 24th from 5:30 to 8:30 at the Post Office Pub Restaurant. Eat, drink, and socialize with business owners, EDC members, and other boards and committees, and share your thoughts and opinions on Grafton and how we can make it a great place to do business. There will be a retirement party for Captain Bob Egan, Captain Tom Mulcahy, and firefighter Roger Currier on January 27th at the Auburn Elks Club from 6:00 to 10:00 p.m. Tickets are $30 each and are available at Fire Department Headquarters. You can contact Lieutenant Eric John, Captain Darab Fadavi, or Ray Meep. So those are the announcements. The next order of business is the poll petition for a National Grid.
Hi, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Foley.
I move the board vote to open the public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All of them in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the hearing is open.
Somebody's got to read the notice.
All right, the legal notice. The Select Board will hold a public hearing on the request of National Grid for permission to construct a line of underground electric conduits, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures under and across the following public way, Brendan Drive. Brendan Drive, National Grid to install one new 50 kVA transformer, pad 4-97, and approximately 200 feet of underground primary cable on Brendan Drive for new service to five Brendan Drive. The public hearing will be held on January the 9th, 2024, in Conference Room A of the Grafton Memorial Municipal Center, located at 30 Providence Road, and via Zoom, starting at 7:00 p.m. The Zoom link will be posted on the January 9th, 2024 Select Board Agenda. The purpose of this hearing is to provide an opportunity for public comment. Anyone wishing to may attend in person or via Zoom. Grafton Select Board, Town Bulletin Board, Grafton News, December 21st, 2023, and December 28th, 2023.
All right, excuse me. So the hearing is open. I will take a motion to continue it until the 23rd.
So moved.
At 7:00 p.m.
At 7:00 p.m.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to continue the public hearing until January 23rd at 7:00 p.m. Do I have a second?
Andy.
Hey, discussion, I think.
Any discussion?
Yeah. I second it.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, the public hearing is continued until that date. We don't have any Select Board appointments. We don't have any appointments on the Fire Chief or the Town Administrator. I did want to... So let's do new business. First up, we have a one-day beer and wine license for Apple Tree Arts at One Grafton Common. I don't believe we have anybody here to represent that one. If the board's okay with it, we can just... If anybody have any questions, we can send those questions. Delong to them, otherwise I'm happy to just make a decision tonight.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Foley.
I move the board vote to approve a one-day beer and wine license for Apple Tree Arts on Saturday, January 27th, 2024.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, next up, we have the common victular license for Pub 122 at 215 Worcester Street.
Just go ahead with the motion, or?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Foley.
I move the board vote to approve an annual common victular license for Pub 122.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yes. We're all set here?
For the victular, yes. Yep, so the Fire Department and Building Department did their walk-through Monday or Tuesday of last week, and found it to be in... The repairs that they requested were completed, and they've been issued their certificate of occupancy.
Oh, good. As of effective when?
Effective, I think it was Tuesday of last week, if I remember correctly.
Yeah.
It was immediately following the weekend.
Yeah, so just to, I guess, give a little context to the public. So inspection, annual inspections were done, I believe in December. There was a few things caught by the Fire Inspector and the Building Inspector that had been identified last year as well, and so they asked, basically before they continued business with their victular license, to address those issues. So we gave them some time. They went ahead and did that. It worked with the landlord, who owns the building, and they... We are still waiting on a alcohol license for that business. So they're in the process of... They didn't get their application in time, so their license for selling alcohol has expired. They're working through the process of getting that renewed. So that's where we're at with...
Yes.
Pub 122.
Just need to vote.
Yep, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries. Next, we have Cable Oversight Committee charge. And Will, I'm happy for you to lead that if you would like, or anybody else, actually.
So, I'll jump in if you'd like. Realistically, this document is just what's already on the website, put into our normal format for charges. I have had conversation with a couple of board members, and I think it would be, you know, worth discussing some of this charge. So the state of Massachusetts is what mandates you to have a cable advisory committee. We have a cable oversight committee, and the difference is that cable oversight committee is charged with handling the funds from the PEG access money that comes in. Cable advisory committees do not handle the funds. And in my research into this, it seems like we are a little bit of an outlier in the way that we handle this, in that the Oversight Committee, I think, is aptly named and probably what was intended at the time, functions as its own mini... Kind of its own mini municipality, because it has its own revenue source and its own board that oversees that revenue. And it also does intermittently create issues back and forth with, you know... Sorry, got distracted for a second. So, you know, it just causes some management issues with staff and who runs staff and who makes daily decisions. So that's just something that was raised while we were looking at this charge and the information that's on the website. So it really is what the board envisions that committee doing.
Sure. Okay, then I'll just open it up for discussion. Any thoughts in terms of what... Or reaction to what Evan just said?
So who has the authority over the Oversight Committee versus an Advisory Committee?
So it's essentially the same, because you appoint both. Really, once you appoint them, they operate independently of the Select Board. You know, I'm sure that if the board weighed in in some way, that that would be, you know, taken up, but realistically, they operate as their own independent body.
I guess from my standpoint, if we were going to substantially alter the charge, I would want to have a discussion with them.
Mm-hmm. Absolutely.
I understand that this reflects, you know, what was on the website. The... For me, I guess I'd want a little bit more specificity in terms of overseeing the funds and dealing with cable-related matters. I'm not sure it's exactly what that should look like, but those seem pretty vague and pretty broad, and I guess, for me, that's the main point of discussion for tonight, is how do we flesh that out a little bit, so that it's not quite as broad?
And it's... I do, I think I have some good resources for that, that I could share with the board if it's something that you want to push to the 23rd and see what other information exists.
Okay.
Because there are sample cable advisory committee, no one that I find calls it a charge, but, you know, their mission and general goals, essentially. And so we have found that in a number of different places. The state has that, but also other communities that have cable advisory committees.
Okay. Makes sense. Any other discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Jefferson.
I was one of the people who reached out to Evan to ask a couple of questions about this. I also reached out to Mr. DeToma to get some of his input as the department head for GCTV. It's my understanding anyways, and correct me if I'm wrong, that even though the Oversight Committee oversees the funds, they don't spend the actual funds. All that goes through the GCTV department head, or gets okayed, I guess.
So it's supposed to. That's not always the case.
Okay.
But realistically, that's how it should operate, right? The department head should be doing, you know, all of his daily activities and spending the money, and then, you know, the board should be approving or signing off on those outlays of funds as appropriate. Just like with many of our other departments with boards and committees that oversee them, you know, you come up with some kind of baseline, so your day-to-day expenses, no one needs to, you know, you're buying paperclips, nobody's gonna, you know, we don't have to stop business. You're going to spend $35,000 on a studio. That would require a conversation and probably a vote from your board as it's designated right now.
So for me, after, you know, learning and discussing some of that information, it seemed like that was something that we could easily remove from their charge, you know, just drop that line about the overseeing the cable fund and its use. As Evan alluded to, and I meant to print out copies for everybody, he did direct me to the state's website, where under cable advisory committees, it lists all the same responsibilities that we have, save for that one bullet point. It's the seventh bullet in the draft for oversee cable fund and its use. You know, and my concern was, in general, I agreed with you that some of these seemed very vague, and that, you know, maybe we should try and narrow them down some. Evan pointed me to this, so I had less of an issue knowing that was how the state had defined the outlines, but, you know, with budgeting, I just felt like it's something that we should at least discuss being specific with. So there's no conflict between what the committee perceives as their duty versus what is the responsibility of the department head.
Yeah, and we're going to have the same kind of level of specificity with other committees which we've had with charges, should probably scrutinize and have a little bit more here.
Yeah, and where it comes to, you know, public funds, it's an important item.
Agree.
For me, I thought that we were looking at this primarily because they lost a couple of members, and we were trying to change the charge to align with their current members, and so they wouldn't have to have the board be as big. So if we're looking at more substantial changes, and information's been passed on to some members and not others of the board, I would either, if we're looking at changing the entire charge, we should push that down, so that all of us can get more information. If we're simply, which I think was the original intent, was just trying to reduce the numbers for the members, and then that led to, oh, let's make the charge look like all of our other charges. It's kind of two separate things, in my opinion. So my understanding was tonight, we were just trying to align the members, and then when we tried to do that, it grew into, well, let's make this look like our other charges in terms of the, you know, presentation, which whatever. But if we're looking at changing the committee, I'd like some more time on that, and to get input from the current committee, for sure.
Okay, that makes very good sense to me. Any comments on that? So this is what I recommend, because there was some time sensitivity to this.
Yeah.
Yeah.
To the, like, I think just the number of members, right?
So what I'd like to discuss then is approving this as presented, minus bullet seven. And we can work on the language and add something back in, if the board's amenable to that, yes.
I would recommend that you pass it just as written.
Correct.
If you remove that, then we don't know who's doing...
Yeah.
What. So I would just pass it as written with your five-member board, and then just put it on a discussion for, is this globally what you want the cable oversight committee to look like?
Okay.
Because there's really no urgency to pulling that off, they're already doing it.
Sure. Okay.
Mr. Chair.
So I will take a motion, and Ms. Foley.
I move the board vote to approve and sign the cable oversight committee charge as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Foley.
Can we recognize the folks in the room relative to the poll petition, even though we pushed that out?
Yes.
So...
Did we miss it? Are we late for that? Did five Brendan Drive already come up on the agenda?
Yeah. Yeah.
So what we did was, we opened the hearing. Because National Grid isn't here to address any concerns, we continued the hearing to our next meeting, which is the 23rd at 7:00 p.m., and National Grid will be available at that meeting for any questions or concerns.
I think the people who are here, we were able to answer all the questions.
You have to come up.
I'm sorry. Is there...
Introduce yourself.
Yes, Bill Zaduski here, building the home at Five Brendan Drive, formerly living at Seven Patricia for 30 years. Everyone who was here at seven on time is still here, and there were a few questions that we were able to answer for them, so I don't think there are any objections or questions for National Grid remaining. So we were under the impression that if there were no questions of National Grid, that they wouldn't have to be here, and that they were here more to answer any questions. So that, is there any way we can do it? We're two, we live in Connecticut in temporary housing now, we're two, over two hours away. We're four months delayed. National Grid said there was power back in June for our home, we were supposed to be in December, so this is every couple of weeks here is excruciating, unfortunately. And I think everyone's, so the conduit line that's running from two homes down through three yards.
Mr. Chairman, I just have to interrupt you for a second. We're not in a public hearing right now.
Yeah.
So you can explain all you...
Okay, I won't, yeah.
And, but you know what? When we reopen the public hearing, you're going to have to re-explain everything all over again. So, so there's really, you know, I mean, I would, again, Mr. Chairman, I would suggest that, you know, you said you're two hours away. We moved the public hearing to the 23rd. You can attend by Zoom, if that's, if that makes it easier for you, and we can just, we can deal with this on the 23rd.
We were off by five minutes.
Hang on a second.
So, hang on a minute.
So what you could consider doing is rescinding your vote to continue?
Okay.
And we just make it clear that we reopen the public hearing here if there's any questions or concerns, and if there are none, you could certainly...
Yeah, I'm with you. Is the board happy with that?
Yes.
I'd like to accommodate.
Yes.
Everybody here.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Foley.
I vote that we rescind our vote relative to the poll petition by National Grid under the public hearings.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second to rescind the motion to continue. All those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Foley.
I move the board vote to open the public hearing. Do I have to read the...
I would just say reopen the public hearing.
Sorry.
And then you don't have to read the whole thing.
I move the board vote to reopen the public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So, continue.
Start over.
Yeah, so the background, real quick, two-minute version. We started building the home about a year ago, bought the land from the pruniers who are here, some of the pruniers, and we found out in November, after we got a letter from National Grid that said we were building the home in June, they said we had enough power. When they came to hook it up in November, they said the, there wasn't enough power left in the neighborhood, so we would have to get another transformer. So the transformer is going in on our property, in our front yard, and they're running a conduit line across the property of the two, three homes, two driveways that will be cut. Everyone who's involved is here, all three homes that the conduit line will go through. So that's, that National Grid had to set up the meeting with everyone here to basically get that approved, and to answer any questions.
I have questions.
Mm-hmm.
Hey, Bill, how's it going?
Yeah.
How's it going?
Good.
Heck of a weather night to come out, huh?
Yeah.
Is everybody cool with the, with digging up the property and running that conduit?
They're all here.
They're all good.
Yep.
So I guess, yeah, anybody who has any concerns or wants to make any other commentary relative to this public hearing, please do come up, and do we have anything on Zoom?
We have no hands-on Zoom.
Okay.
So just one more question. So that conduit then runs down to the end of the street?
No, it runs from...
Six Brendan Drive.
Six Brendan to eight, to seven Brendan, across two homes.
It's in the packet, the...
Yeah, there's a picture of where they're putting the line. Yeah, yeah. It's right along the sidewalk of the...
In existing right away from that that National Grid already has.
I think you said it would be between the sidewalk and the street, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Good. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Foley.
I move the board vote to close the public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Foley.
I move the board vote to approve and sign the poll petition by National Grid for Brendan Drive.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Drive safe.
Yes, thank you.
Please do drive safe.
Thank you for coming.
All right. Next up, we have discussed the cell tower at 58 and 21 Phallett Street with the town planner, which we have on Zoom. Fiona Coughlin, come on in.
Hello, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Thanks for having me this evening for this conversation. This is extremely helpful for the planning board and for our research process as we continue to navigate this public hearing. I'm going to try my best to be as succinct and clear as possible. I'm not a wireless expert, but I have somehow become a master of wireless law now, so I'll try and be short and sweet. So just a brief introduction to the project for the board. The applicant submitted an application early, I'm sorry, late 2022 for a cell tower at the site 58 Phallett Street. That hearing process took several months to navigate. There was a lot of public comment and opposition. The board had a lot of concerns, and ultimately what ended up happening was the applicant withdrew without prejudice in early 2023. We also had a board turnover, so there was concern about not getting the four out of five planning board member votes to get the applicant, to ultimately get the special permit. So they refiled with the planning board on, I'm sorry, June 28th, 2023, so that's the current application that's before us and under review. There's been a series of issues that have been brought up and worked through to date, including confirming the need for the coverage by Verizon. Excuse me, sorry. But, so ultimately, why we're here this evening is that the zoning bylaw allows the planning board, and actually what requires the planning board, to examine other sites as potential alternatives if there is an issue with the proposed site. As I mentioned before, the, there has been a lot of opposition from members of the public in the Butters to the 58 Phallett Street site, so the board did want to strongly consider other alternatives. The two alternatives that we kind of narrowed it down to were 188 Providence Road and 21 Phallett Street. So 188 Providence, after, you know, going through the data, et cetera, et cetera, with the applicant, was ruled out. It doesn't meet coverage gaps, it won't service the town, it's not a suitable option. However, that left us with 21 Phallett Street. So 21 Phallett Street is a, obviously, town-owned site. It is 53 acres. There is a potential there. However, it also has a lot of complications. So first and foremost, the Water District owns the land in, owns the access road in the Wellhead area. And the Wellhead area is the primary portion of the site that's buildable. So that's, that's an issue. Outside of the area that the Water District owns, there's potential to build, but it would be a very complicated process from an environmental perspective. There's FEMA floodway, floodplains, wetlands, hydrologic crossings, and just a variety of issues. And there's Article 97 issues that have been presented, and a lot of this is information that is in the hearing packet materials that I sent as, that I sent prior to this evening, so I don't want to get too far into it unless the board has specific questions. But ultimately, the only feasible and developable area of 21 Phallett Street would be either within the lease area of the Water District, which I've spoken to staff, and based on my conversations, they, that seems highly unlikely. If the tower were to fall, that would, that could pose an issue. They need to approve the maintenance technician who would be coming in and out through the access road, just a whole bunch of concerns that the Water District had. They have not met yet to discuss this. They're meeting tomorrow at 7:30, and then they will issue a formal letter to the planning board with their findings and their recommendation. But all roads kind of point to that it's probably, it's not an ideal location. They said outside the lease area, that's possible, and they don't have a say, but it also posed, a similar issue could arise at 21 Phallett with a Butters near that site, because there's residential properties that aren't, that would be able to see a cell tower near the buildable portion of the site. So long, you know, with all of that background, you know, from our perspective, you know, the board just really wants to try and get a sense of, okay, the applicant has presented their testimony as to why they think it's not adequate. Our council has provided a letter in response that we need, that we should get confirmation. The board would like confirmation, and that's why I'm here this evening. But one thing that, you know, I wanted to raise with the Select Board this evening, aside from the environmental issues on the site and all the things I just said, there was an RFP for a cell tower issued for this site, 21 Phallett Street. there was an RFP for a cell tower issued for this site, twenty-one Phallett Street back in twenty seventeen. I don't know, uh, all of the, um, specific history, but I know that Verizon, who was the, who's the applicant for the fifty, for fifty Phallett, would, did not respond to that because it did, they stated that it did not meet their coverage goals. And I don't think any, I don't think the, I, my understanding, and Evan might be able to confirm or deny this, but there was no viable respondents to that RFP. So then it was reissued in twenty eighteen, same situation. So, and, and, and then from that point on, I don't think it was ever, it was pursued any further. But because it was at one time pursued, it means that the site is a viable, viable option for this type of use. So I just want to get an understanding from the select board if this is something that you would be interested in doing, if you think it's a, it's a hard no, why? And then I will bring, uh, basically I will summarize our conversation this evening for the planning board and enter it into our record, um, as part of the hearing process. Sorry, that was extremely long-winded.
Uh, no, that was a, a nice encapsulation of, of the issue. Okay, then I'll just open up the discussion for any, any questions.
So Fiona, the, um, what, what you're asking for is you're asking for us to, this tw- this twenty-one Phallett Street, is that, that's the town property, right?
That is, yeah.
And that's, and so what town property is that? Is that Duffin Park?
Yes, correct.
So that's, that's the chapter ninety-seven issue?
Uh, nope, it's only partially chapter ninety-seven issue. That's really thirty-three Phallett.
Okay.
Is the, the land swap. So this is twenty-one, this is the main parcel.
Okay.
And I should have specified this, um, the Article ninety-seven designation is the wellhead area and the access road that's owned by the Water Department. So that particular area has Article ninety-seven designation and that is a complicated process, um, that involves, um, a vote of the legislature to be removed from. Ultimately, ninety, Article ninety-seven, you're, it, it's uncommon, once you enter into it, that you would exit out of that designation because it's, it's for, um, open space protection and water, water quality protection.
So for them to put a, a, a cell tower on this piece of property that needs to get approved by us and then also lease or possible sale approved by town meeting. Correct?
I believe, yes, I would.
And, and also the Water District's, there's a vote in there somewhere due to them having leased that section.
Property.
A property.
Yeah. So.
Right, Fiona?
Yeah, right. I mean, the, the Water District becomes involved if the water tower is within their, their leased area. So they, they, uh, their wellhead area and the portion that they lease, there's a solar array on the property as well that they lease out to. And, and solar is a different animal because it has different protections under the state. But, um, yeah, any, any infringement on those areas, that would be, the Water District would have to have a say. But there is a good portion of land that's outside of that area that the, the tower could feasibly be located in. But that, but those areas, um, have the environmental constraints that I was, um, talking about earlier.
So realistically.
At the twenty-one site, we've got two locations.
Yes.
Two basic locations. We've got the, uh, Water District area and then we've got another area.
And the environmental issues.
The other area, the non-Water District has its own environmental issues, yeah. Um, and the chapter ninety-seven.
Yeah. So, so Fiona, pretty much this has the, you know, snowballs chance in a microwave of flying through here. Is that?
And this is the site where we issued an RFP in twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, to which we had no responses, including Verizon, correct?
Correct.
Yes, I believe, I.
That, that's correct.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I agree with you, Fiona. Um, from what I was able to ascertain from, um, our records, if, if there were respondents, they weren't recorded, which it seems highly unlikely to me since we have very good records from that time period of our procurement and RFPs.
Okay. Um, and so then that's twenty-one Phallett. Fifty-eight Phallett is, uh, where the, um, current proposal is cited.
Right.
There are concerns from residents about, um, sort of the, the visual impact and, uh, an impact to the neighborhood.
Correct. Yes, we've received testimony from, um, several abutters, uh, regarding, you know, in, um, yeah, the, the altering of the character, uh, effects of, you know, visually on the area, um, placing the tower on a ridge line, which there is a line in our zoning bylaw that, um, tries, you know, that, that basically says that that's not encouraged. Um, and, you know, there's cite, citing of the purpose and intent of our bylaw that, you know, this isn't, that, this is in violation of, and, you know, obviously our planning board and planning department staff take that very seriously. So, um, we, you know, we're trying to investigate all feasible alternatives and record that. Um, but, you know, the applicant, I will say, that the applicant, but when the prior, um, application was filed before it was withdrawn, the tower wa- at fifty-eight Phallett was a hundred and seventy feet. And they withdrew, took into consideration the comments that were received during that process, refiled and the, the site, I'm sorry, the tower is now a hundred and fifty-five feet. Um, and then they placed it, they have placed it below the ridge line, so it's less visually prominent. And they submitted photosims from a variety of different vantage points to confirm that, you know, it's, it's less visible than when they previously presented it. So I will, you know, have, do, do have to acknowledge that they have been considerate of testimony received from the first go around.
Okay. All right. Any more discussion?
I mean, I, so Mr. Chair, um, I've gone to a lot of these planning meetings relative to this exact, um, issue. And I have issues with the fifty-eight Phallett Street. I think one being that it does, in fact, go against the bylaws that we have in place to protect things like this from not happening. Um, so therefore they have to go above and beyond to try to show us, well, why do we need this or why does it have to be here? And in fact, the meetings that I've gone to, and it is indicated in one of the, the correspondence that I, that you included here, Fiona, um, was that what does it do for Grafton in terms of coverage? And the, the photos that I saw are the overlays in one of those meetings of, you know, what coverage will we gain versus what we have now are negligible in my opinion. Um, so if we're looking at something that's going to benefit, we're going to do detriment to Grafton, what, what's the benefit actually for Grafton? And I don't see those two things, um, weighing out. I think the, and then the other thing for me goes back to, which might not be, um, relevant at this point was, you know, how do we get into this situation in terms of, you know, what went on with Sutton and that LLC and, and it was a little bit nefarious in terms of how did Gra- how did we even get here? Um, and so for that reason as well, that site to me does not seem right. And I don't know if we're still pursuing that or, or, you know, what's going on in that kind of legal end of things with Sutton.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it's like, almost like a, a dual track here.
Right.
Yeah, unfortunately, the issue with the Sutton Planning Board is we, we did all that we could and, um, we had correspondence with them, but basically we, we kind of don't have, we, we, we're kind of stuck with, with the decision that the Sutton Planning Board made, which I still don't understand myself, but, um, yeah, it was, it was, that was certainly a strange situation. And I just also wanted to make a comment, um, in Merity, to your point that, yes, so the co- so the coverage maps that were submitted by the, by Verizon, they do show, and it's very clear, and they do say, you know, in the report that they are using the cell tower to fill s- coverage gaps in Grafton, of course, but it really is to meet coverage goals in the surrounding communities as well, and they have said that. Um.
I know, I don't know if, sorry, I, I don't know if it was, um, this gentleman too, that David Maxson, who we have the correspondence, is that the gentleman that spoke on our behalf during some of your meetings?
Yes, David Maxson is our, our wireless.
He was fabulous, by the way, and, um, you know, really, I agreed with him, you know, everything that he brought up in the meetings. I haven't been to all the meetings, but I've been to quite a few following this. Additionally, if you drive over there and you look at that knoll and, you know, I understand we have to make progress and sometimes that involves, you know, making things not look great, but it, it's really a beautiful spot. Um, and the height of that, I, I can't make out in these, I was at the meeting when the diagrams or when the balloon test was done, I thought maybe at the hundred and seventy foot. Are these different? I can't even make it out in these photos anyways. They, they weren't really helpful, but.
Yes, so the, all of the information, um, submitted for the packet was, it's at the hundred and fifty-five foot height, the current. Yeah.
So I understand there's obviously issues with twenty-one Phallett Street, um, but for me, it, it's worth pursuing for those reasons.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Jeff. Um. It's a difficult topic to discuss and without selling cal- callous or insensitive towards, I guess, one group's needs versus the other. For me, there's just, there's too many issues with the twenty-one Phallett Street property. Um, you know, and just to reference things that come up in opposition of other projects that we've heard around town, I would think, um, whereas twenty-one Phallett has been designated a priority habitat for rare species and habitat for rare wildlife, among all the other wetland and wellhead protections that are a part of that, we should, we shouldn't consider, um, that location for a cell tower. Um, I agree that based on the data that we received, it looks like either way, at either site, uh, coverage improves for Grafton. Obviously, the big improvement is for our neighboring communities with the, with the taller, um, tower. I'm not sure if this is what, um, Ms. Foley intended with her, with her comment just now about not being able to notice the difference, but in looking at the rendered photographs, that was, that was my feeling is it is, it, it was minimally intrusive. Um, and something that I don't think, you know, obviously we're going to see it there, but it's twenty twenty-four, it's a cell tower, you know. Um, we can argue whether it's fair that Grafton shoulder the burden of enhancing cell signal for our neighboring communities. I mean, if it were me, I would want our opinion considered if the shoe was on the other foot and somebody was in, you know, a, a good deal of coverage in our town was at the whim of another town select board. Um, so, uh, you know, as it, as it currently stands and knowing that, um, we've had no bidders for the twenty-one Phallett RFP. Um, I mean, I'm in favor of the fifty-eight, but I think that is the decision, um, that, that the boards, the board needs to make is do we, are we comfortable with the current offer or is it something that we want to, I guess, deny and hope for the best? It, it just doesn't seem to be any indication that Verizon would come back with any interest for the twenty-one Phallett lot. So, um, saying no seems to be saying no and that's, and, and could be, very well be the end of the project. And if that's everybody's will, then, then so be it. Um, it just, uh, I don't know if, it, I guess that, to me, that approach feels a, a little bit short-sighted. It's, uh, it's, it's a minimally intrusive project that's going to benefit a lot of people.
Any other discussion?
Some of the feedback does seem that it feels more min- more than minimally intrusive. Is it? Fiona, with the butters? At least one person feels like, no way.
Well, you know, I, I, yeah, I, I would probably not want to weigh in. I think that the.
Respectfully, isn't that for us to decide?
Yeah, but I mean, but they live there and we have to consider their.
Right, I'm just, uh, my only, my only thought, Mark, I think that the question is the right question.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
I think Fiona's the wrong person to answer.
Right.
Her being a planner and not a resident of Grafton, her version of minimally intrusive is, um, not relevant. Uh, no offense, Fiona, but it's the same as mine. You know, I don't, I don't, my property doesn't abut it. I don't live in Grafton and so we try to not weigh in on what we feel is intrusive. You, the residents, need to, to tell us what, what you feel is intrusive. However, um, the only, while I, while I'm speaking, I guess, the only thing I would recommend is, um, the, or the, that I would like to note is the, the cases under the Federal Telecommunications Act that I've read all specify that the site, that the site of the tower, that the ta- the municipality in which it's going to, tower's going to be cited, you cannot use the, it's only going to impact a little bit here, uh, argument. I'm not articulating that well, but you, you. So because Sutton is getting the better end of this coverage improvement, um, the FCC and, and the federal courts have ruled that that's not a reason for denial. Um, so we, we have to thread the needle carefully if the, you know, if, if ultimately if the residents of Grafton don't want it and vote no, then we obviously have an obligation to defend that decision, uh, which we, we will do. Um, it's daunting with the Federal Telecommunications Act because there are very, very few wins against the federal government. And, um, when you can, when you can be a Verizon and show that there is a coverage gap, the courts have not favorably backed the municipalities in saying, you know, this is a pristine area or it's going to ruin our view or whatever that is. Um, I, I'm not suggesting that that's correct. I'm just saying that that's kind of the reality that we're up against. Um, and so to redirect for Fiona, I mean, it really is a matter of, does the board have an appetite to issue an RFP for twenty-one Phallett and see what happens? Um, or does it, or does it not? Just in, in a more succinct manner, maybe.
Yeah, Evan, that, that's correct. And yeah, I'm glad you brought that up because, yeah, the pro- there's a prohibition of service, um, issue where, yeah, basically exactly what Evan just said, you, like a, community cannot deny an application like this just because it, you know, it serves another community better than the community where the cell tower is located. And the, the board, my, my board will really only be able, that their job is to enforce the zoning by law. And that's really like, that's what they are supposed to do. And, you know, because we've, we've had this conversation with them as well where, you know, the coverage issue gets very challenging, very hard to defend in court, as Evan said. Um, so, yeah, I just wanted to underscore that. But yes, just, yeah, that, that, that's where we're at with this now.
Fiona, can I, um, just ask a couple of questions? Um, so the RFP that was issued in seventeen eighteen, um, was that for the whole, uh, twenty-one Phallett property, um, or just a portion of it?
That's a good question. I believe it was for the entirety, the, the entire parcel. Um, Evan, do you know if the top of your?
Yeah, it was the, it, it reads to me like it's the entire parcel.
Okay, so.
That's how I would, that's how I would have interpreted.
If I was a provider, um, then I would probably consider um, the, uh, Water District part of the property, right? Does that make sense?
Yeah, yes.
Yes.
It sounds like that's the most feasible, if there is a feasible option.
Yeah, that would be, that, that portion of the lot is definitely the most buildable and less, um, challenging from a state and local regulatory perspective. Yes.
So if we were to, um, build a tower there or if Verizon were to build a tower there, um, would that be visible at all?
Yes. Yes.
Um, you, you, you are in some, y- in some degrees, you are talking about shifting the impact from one one, one group of people to another group of people.
That's a little bit of my concern is, you know, we're moving the location a little bit, but it's not like we're moving it out into a spot that's not visible by anybody. So as you're driving down Phallett Street and probably some of the, uh, neighboring streets, you're still going to see a cell tower there. Um, so, so I guess that, um, that makes a difference to me. Um, Fiona, is there time constraints to this? Uh, because my, my thinking is I have heard a pretty articulate um, description of the issues, um, on the lower portion uh, that have, you know, of, of twenty-one, but the, the wellhead side of the, or portion of it, um, I, I'd kind of like to tune into the the meeting tomorrow and see what their recommendation looks like, um, for me, because, uh.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So the applicant is scheduled to come back before the planning board on the twenty-second and they are looking to close.
Okay.
At that time. And the water commissioners meeting is, yeah, it's unfortunate because it's, it's tomorrow morning, so. Only if it was yesterday.
And our next-
Yeah, I mean, I will say that from conversa- I mean, I can't speak on behalf of the water commissioners, um, but from conversations that I've had with staff who have worked for the commissioners for a long time, they said, you know, because of all of the potential things that could go wrong and the complications and the, and the level of oversight the commissioners would have to have, it, it, it's very, it, it would be unlikely that they would recommend, um, recommend to pursuing this, especially near their, like, critical infrastructure and near the wellhead.
Yep, okay.
If it fell on the solar array, I mean, yeah, that would be very challenging.
Sure, um, uh, okay, got it. Um, any other questions or, uh?
Uh, Mr. Chair, just to, you're pointing through Fiona, um, so like, the difference for me would be at, uh, twenty-one, it's a relatively flat surface versus where they're putting it at fifty-eight, it's already an elevated, you know, like, knoll over there, is it not? So it wouldn't be certainly more visible at the fifty-eight. It's just a higher, putting it almost, I, I mean, I guess they brought it down a little bit, but it's still on a little hill, or substantial hill, I guess.
Yeah, I, I appreciate that. I, I guess my thinking is that they're after coverage.
Right.
So if they're putting it on the lower site, is it gonna be a taller tower? They've reduced the height already, it sounds like a little bit, um, in the fifty-eight, so that, that's, that's my concern, I guess, is that you put it in a different location and it becomes higher. So I, I, I don't know. It, it obviously hasn't been designed on that site, so I don't think, it's all speculation in terms of what it's-
That was, that was our general speculation, although I think it is pretty rational or reasonable approach to think that if, you know, we can't be up here on the hill, now we've gotta be on the fly and we're gonna bring the tower up to it.
Right.
To a different, to a different height.
Right, and, and I will just make a point to say that the area that's outside of the lease area from the Water District, the topography gets more challenging and is another, i- i- is, is, would the tower be, need to be even taller because there's some slope there, so.
Yeah.
It's just another caveat.
Mr. Chairman?
Mister.
It's Alamo. No, it's okay, you can just go, remember the Alamo. Do we have time to, to do an onsite, like, visit to see it better, or is it just too late for that? Could you, or you Evan, take me over there Friday and point, show me everything so I have a better understanding? I would work a little bit better seeing the real life sort of scenario. Or if it's too late, then it's too late, but it would be easier than judging off of some of these graphics, which are great.
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy to take you, I'm, I'm happy to take you there, Mark, and we can go through, I mean, I'll just, um, yeah, I'm happy to do that, we can coordinate that and, you know, I think into the best way to probably provide feedback at this juncture, just based on where we're at, um, maybe, and you, you could assess the site and then you can submit something in writing to me that I can upload to the record, like, with your opinion.
I know where it is, I just, I, I'm not fully picturing each location.
It sounds like Fiona just would need us to weigh in tonight, one way or the other.
Yes, right, one at a time.
Okay, sorry, if I, if I could, I'm not, I'm not on the board, so I can just weigh in whenever I want, I guess. Um, no, um, so I, I think that you have, it, because of the way that this all rolled out, you have a very short time window, so, um, you know, if you have, uh, members of the board that need more information or more time or wanna see it or however this plays out, the other consideration you have is to, you know, have a, maybe a Zoom-only component where you meet for, you know, it'll be a thirty-minute meeting next Tuesday and, and, you know, still be able to meet before the planning board, but also gives you a little more time to digest and think about whether or not you'd want to pursue an RFP or not.
Yep.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Foley.
Um, the benefit of that would be that the Water District is ma- meeting tomorrow and then we would hear what they have to say, which I think is kind of, will be compelling.
I'm very interested in that, uh, input. Um, what's the board feel about that? Next Tuesday?
Yeah, I was, that's what I was thinking of, of saying is that we could meet next, next Tuesday, but, um, Fiona, one, another question about the, uh, Chapter ninety-seven. So is that designated Chapter ninety-seven land? Or is it a portion of it or the entire piece?
Oh, it's, it's so the, sorry, I'm, the Article ninety-seven designated land is the wellhead, um, is, is the wellhead just the circular area around the wellhead and then the access road to that area? And outside of it is, is not.
Okay. Yeah, I don't have a problem with next Tuesday.
Okay. All right, so if the board's happy, then, um, yeah, do, do what you gotta do this week to get the information you need. Just schedule something for Tuesday, um, and we'll get you a vote, Fiona.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. Appreciate your time.
Thanks so much for putting all the information together so we could put it in the packet. Um, it was a lot, um, but, you know, I did ask you to put it in there and it was tremendously valuable to me to see all the resident feedback, all of the different locations, the history. This was a complex one, so, um, I appreciate you doing the work to, to put that together for us.
Of course, absolutely, and I know that it's, it is quite complicated, so, you know, feel free to, a- anyone on the board, ask me questions at any time, you know, between now and Tuesday to help, help prep for your meeting. I'm happy to do that.
Appreciate it. Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, um, let's see, where are we at? Um, next up, we have the, uh, fire station conversation, um, at three Worcester Street. Um, so, uh, if the board is amenable, um, I'd like to hold off this conversation until the twenty-third. Mr. Cummings has a budget presentation, which is one of his bigger meetings of the year tonight. Um, and I didn't want to put him in a situation where he had to be, uh, concerned about coming down to a select board meeting uh, during the middle of that presentation. So if everybody's okay with it, we'll just put it on the next meeting, um, in, the next in-person meeting and discuss it then. Um, and Evan, you'll be ready with some additional information.
Yes.
For us to consider.
Yep.
Does everyone have that?
Yeah, no problem.
Great. Um, all right, moving on, uh, next up, we have the, uh, Town Administrator's Contract. Um, so I'll just, um, I, I guess, uh, Mr. Mead and Mr. Jefferson, if you guys, uh, were on-
Is there any, uh, public comment on the last, uh, the cell tower?
Um.
Is that one, is this one of those meetings where you can comment on it?
So, um, we'll have public comments at the end of the meeting, um, and I'll give you three minutes and, um, absolutely, we, we'd love to hear from you. So, uh, I'll ask you guys to kind of, since you, uh, were negotiating the contract, um-
Yep, turn it over to Andy.
Conversation.
He knew that was coming.
So, we renegotiated the Town Administrator's Contract. Um, we've gone through a couple rounds of executive session to iron things out, um, with the board. We sent materials to Town Labor Council, Mark Terry, who has approved and returned them. I guess, are there any specific questions that you'd like me to answer beyond that? We reviewed the draft, everything lined up with what the board had agreed upon in those executive session meetings.
Did we get a draft, the board, or the final draft?
I don't believe that went to the full board.
I didn't get it, just wasn't sure if anyone else did.
Do we have a printed copy of that?
I, I cannot. Well, this is going well, huh?
Hmm.
There was a second member, if he wants to step up and, uh-
Well, trust me, I'll step up, but just a second, the, 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 the draft contract should be on the, uh, should be here. It's not.
Okay. Wow.
We don't have a draft contract in front of us.
All right.
We cannot, we cannot vote on the contract because we don't have a draft contract in front of us. So I moved that we push this off until the twenty-third. Colleen?
Second.
So whilst I don't think we need to vote on it necessarily, we don't need to vote on it.
Right, yeah.
No, no, we don't need to vote on it, I just, it, you know, I, I mean, I looked at it, I didn't know if Andy had it or somebody had it or, you know, we're, we're gonna vote to sign this thing and we don't have it, correct? I'm not blaming you, Andy, no, I'm, well, okay, so I'm blaming you.
It does sound like you blame it a bit.
Well, no, 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 no.
We do not have a printed-
No.
Well, so regardless, we're in a situation where it's, uh, we don't have it in hand.
Right.
So, uh, what does the board want to do? Ray wants to move it till the twenty-third?
Well, we can move it to the sixteenth, it doesn't matter, I don't, it doesn't matter to me.
Yeah, I think, I, I think we, I mean- Does the Town Administrator agreeable to moving that to the sixteenth? It seemed like there was only, uh, you know, we've agreed on the deal in principle. It seemed like, uh, the only time-sensitive thing was the municipal vehicle that we discussed, so, uh, you're already acting on that. Is there any other impact to pushing it a week?
Nope.
Okay.
Okay. All right, then we'll just move.
To the sixteenth or the twenty-third, Matt?
To the sixteenth. And we'll get that draft circulated.
Uh, all right, next up, we have the, uh, Kupla Repair Contract.
Uh, so the contract is, uh, in front of you for signature. This is just for us to enter the agreement with the Mass Historic Commission to actually get access to the money that's been awarded. Uh, and we just need the board to vote to allow the chair to sign and get a signature.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Foley.
I move the board vote to approve and sign the contract with MHC for repairs to the Grafton Public Libraries Kupla.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, select board reports.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Mead.
Uh, I just have, I have, while I wanted to, Matt, you brought up the, uh, uh, the EDC meeting and that's, that's very important for, you know, uh, for everybody to show up to and, and get to meet people from the EDC and, and committees and, and, um, it'll be a good time, fun will be had by all.
So January twenty-fourth, Post Office Pub, uh, five thirty to eight.
Uh, there'll be representatives from CMRPC to put on a presentation and, uh, Senator, Senator Moore, Senator, and Representative Meridian will probably be there.
What if we lost?
Maybe not, because the lights just blinked, but, oops.
We might have just kicked over to the generator.
Yeah, um, the other thing is, is it's, uh, it's January of twenty-four and, um, I am up for reelection in May and I will be running again for, uh, the board in May.
All right.
Let me just make sure we're still live when Ray was speaking his announcement.
Nobody's gonna listen anyway, everything's cycled.
Oh, I hope he doesn't.
All right.
I was out. Speaking to no one.
I do it, I do that all the time, Evan.
Should we just take a two-minute recess?
Oh, all right.
Are you not online?
No, I think the Zoom went down.
Okay, all right, and let's take, uh, ten minutes. It's still going? Okay.
Justin's at home watching it, you're here.
We've got the broadcast, but no Zoom.
No, actually, the, the Zoom might still be on.
You don't have internet, if that's-
Uh, so that we have access-
My daughter says back up.
Okay, so we have thumbs up on Zoom, uh, great. So, uh, yeah, apologies to anybody watching, uh, on the streaming, uh, video. Um, we had a power cycle here in the building and it knocked us off of Zoom, so, uh, we're gonna have to rewind just a couple of minutes, um, so over to you, Ray, for the select board update.
Well, I hope the people at home have power and cable so that they can, they can watch this. Anyway, I, I brought up before about the, uh, uh, EDC, um, uh, business meeting, uh, on the twenty-fourth of January at the Post Office Pub. And please come and talk to your local business people and, uh, C, CMRPC will be putting on a presentation that night, uh, it's from five thirty to eight, uh, at, uh, the Post Office Pub. And the other, and, thing is, is that it's twenty twenty-four and I am up for reelection in May and I will be running again for another term.
Outstanding. Uh, any other select board reports?
CIPC meeting, I attended that just before the break, uh, reorganized the board and got into some high-level budgeting and called it a night.
All right. Love a good CIPC meeting.
Yeah.
Uh, all right, anybody else?
Yeah, I'm just gonna do a shout-out, I don't usually do that, but for, to the DPW, I put something on my Facebook page and I, it is relative, actually, to a correspondence and kudos to the woman who actually called in.
Yep.
But I drove from northern Vermont on Sunday and I got into Grafton around five, I'd say, and it was thirty miles an hour, white-knuckling it the whole way for eight hours for a three-and-a-half-hour drive generally. And when I passed over the border on Old Westboro Road into Grafton, it was the first time I saw black pavement for the entire duration. We got into the common and my daughter and I were saying, we were like, there was, uh, there are two cars and six plows all around us and all the way down my street, um, and even going to work the next day into other towns, Milbury, I don't, I shouldn't call it other towns, I suppose, but, um, really great job to the DPW, I, I really commend them on their job with that, um, storm. That's all I've got.
Outstanding. Um, I'll just piggyback on that, uh, so Evan sent us a resident, uh, voicemail that was left, um, with very similar sentiments. Great job, uh, you know, to all of our plow drivers and, uh, DPW for their, their storm cleanup. I had a, I was on the roads at, uh, six in the morning on Sunday, um, and I had a very similar experience, uh, on Old Westboro Ro- Road. Um, the roads were pretty good, right in the middle of the heart of the sort of morning part of the storm, so, um, yeah, thanks so much, uh, to all of those guys, that's much appreciated. Um, any other select board reports?
I'm the only one, so I'll go.
Go for it.
Uh, Affordable Housing Trust met on December fourteenth. Um, John, John Grant from GSX attended via Zoom to discuss some updates on seventeen twenty-seven Upton. They've made changes to the footprint again to improve setback space and done as much informal work with planning and conservation as, they really can right now, so they're finalizing submissions and expect to have, um, both the, those packets before both boards in the next three to four months. Uh, they also noted that production times appear to be returning to median levels after heavy COVID-related delays. Uh, and better federal financing rates also seem imminent, so, um, again, things could pick up quickly on that project. Uh, they're working through some leached chemical mitigation efforts with the town, uh, as well. Uh, I attended the Wa- Grafton Water District Special Meeting on December thirteenth, where they voted all the matching articles on there and to move forward with the Trinity Ave well updates that, uh, we discussed at our Falltown meeting, uh, as well as voting to prep, uh, the other facilities for the upcoming PFAS requirements. Um, and talking with them, one of the commissioners there actually pulls double duty between Grafton Water and South Grafton Water. So, um, I took the opportunity to ask him how, how, if any, uh, impact would they feel in South Grafton? Uh, and, and they said, um, they're in good shape because they have room to host facilities on both well sites. Um, and they're all, they're also working through a similar process, um, you know, for federal grant money and whatnot that, uh, the Grafton Water District is working through. Uh, we also received, uh- Uh, we also received, uh, Evan and I received an email from Matt Pearson over there at Grafton Water District this morning to let us know that appraisals and land surveys for the two parcels are in progress. Wetlands have been flagged on Powerline Drive. Um, the water redist- district received approval from the state for twenty-three million dollars worth of SRF funds for the East Street and Worcester Street well PFAS treatment plants. Um, after a pilot study, design and DEP approvals and bidding, construction they're expecting should start in the summer of twenty-twenty-five. Uh, just to give the board a heads up, the district will likely ask the town to waive building permitting fees for their three PFAS treatment plants at East Street, Worcester Street and Trinity.
Good stuff. All right. Uh, next up, we have the TA report. Over to you, Evan.
Okay. Um, so it's wear time, so there's not a lot of movement on some of these construction, uh, items. Uh, you are going, you, you just discussed the Cupola project. Otherwise, everything else is either in some site, state of design or waiting for warmer weather. The only real news I have to share is, um, we may be looking at a potential change in our RECC location. Um, and so we've started working with Westboro on that. The chiefs and I toured, uh, an alternate site. And we're also looking at an alternate site here in Grafton. Not optimal, but not catastrophic for the process, really. Um, so more to come in probably the next two meetings, but right now that's, that's about all we have. We've done our initial site visits and, and had some preliminary discussions, so.
We got no fire station.
What happened with the, the initial site?
So, uh, as you know, that site was a superfund site. And there is, um, there's some concern about, potential other contamination on the site that was not identified in the original commission study. So, uh, the EPA has said, well, you need to now do a secondary study. It's probably a two-year process to do a secondary study. So, in the amount of time it would take us to go through that process, we're hopeful that we find another suitable location that su- suits our needs, that we don't even have to deal with any of, of that. So, i- it is, it's a little bit of a bummer. Um, it's a superfund site, but it also is a really good location for an RECC. Um, and, uh, so it is what it is. We, we, we toured the Westboro, uh, a Westboro alternate site that we don't even know if Westboro, uh, select, is their select board's gonna discuss it tonight, so we don't even know the, what their appetite is. And then, uh, Norm and I have been, uh, sorry, Chief Crapo and I have been, uh, looking at alternate sites here in Grafton to see if there's a potential solution there as well. So, uh, you know, we'll, I'm confident we're gonna figure it out. It's just a, just a hiccup in the process. Um, other updates? So we are heavy into the budget process. Uh, seems like that's all we, we have time to, to discuss, uh, right now. So, uh, forecasting, we're about ninety-five percent complete. I'm gonna have that for the, uh, budget presentation, um, prior to the meeting, the chair and I were, were chatting. And I, I think what we need to start doing is, um, have an initial forecasting, uh, presentation as soon as the fiscal year closes, so sometime in July. Because that gives us our speculative, uh, projection. When we do it this close to the budget, we're moving the budget numbers every day and that's moving our projections every day. And so they're not worth the paper that they're printed on until we've settled reasonably on what we're gonna spend in the current fiscal year. Um, and so that's just something I think we need to capture better moving forward. Um, capital planning, we did have a CIPC meeting. Um, all of the capital items have been submitted. I did present the kind of base capital plan, uh, and we went over some of the rationales for those items as well as the total budgeting, uh, of that. We're gonna make some revisions there and then come back to CIPC and have a, a more, uh, nuanced discussion of, you know, what stays and what goes. But, uh, all, all that said, it looks like a pretty substantial, um, capital plan. And, uh, I think we're gonna be able to accomplish a lot of things and especially some, some backlog items that have been kind of unable to have been funded. Uh, particularly in the school department that they've been looking for some capital relief. So, uh, we're pretty excited about that. Um, budget book, everything, uh, as far as our initial layout is done and, um, we will, um, as soon as we push out the first budget on the twenty-third, that's when that'll get populated with all our data from ClearGov. Um, and then operational budget, so we are presenting that on the twenty-third. Um, there's a theme there, obviously. Um, we're also working pretty much daily with department heads of what, uh, is critical and what we can, um, you know, back away from, um, in order to get our budget number within the parameters that we have. Um, so this time of year, it's always, uh, doom and gloom, but we always seem to, to get there in the end. So, I'm confident that in the next two weeks, we'll, we'll have a, a shareable and, uh, balanced budget. So. Um, seventeen and twenty-seven Upton Street, we've had quite a bit of movement on that, um, as far as, uh, our legal counsel meeting with the, um, the folks at GSX and, uh, some of the financial people to try to really get that project off the ground. It seems like we are seeing some considerable, um, forward momentum at this point and, um, you know, they're, they're still on track for sometime early spring submitting to Conservation Commission. Um, so we've seen one revised, um, layout which, uh, should satisfy everything that the Conservation Commission had already given for comments. And, uh, so I think we're, we're looking at a project there, which is good.
Is there a, um, expected date, uh, for some type of agreement with the, you know, environmental, uh, cleanup concerns there?
Um, yeah, it's, it's, you're probably a couple of sixty days out, maybe, somewhere around there. So the, the attorneys have it now. Um, and, uh, so it's a little bit, it's not out of my hands, but it's, I'm not directly at that table. They're working out some of the minutia and then they'll come back to us and see if it's something that we find agreeable. So.
Okay.
Um, we also don't think that the impact is, is quite, uh, what it was originally made out to be. Um, the lead that is onsite at the DPW garage seems to be limited to one bay and probably has not migrated. Um, there's leachable lead and there's highly leachable lead. And so I guess we're looking at a more of a benign. If lead in the ground can be benign, but you, you know what I mean? Um, so I don't think we're looking at really i- it traveling anywhere. So I, I think we're, we're looking better each conversation that we have. And then library flood update. So the vinyl flooring is done. Um, Will's gonna be following up with the carpeting folks this week, um, to try to just get that buttoned up and get our, all of our stuff back to where it needs to be and have those two rooms opened. Um, we have a couple of plumbing issues and a couple of less minor things. Uh, we did spend, uh, time yesterday onsite. Uh, obviously, we're having quite a bit of rain on top of quite a bit of snow. Um, and so, uh, today we, we had placed, um, sandbags at the doors on that side of the, the building. We've also put sandbags into direct water to the drains that are there. Um, and we had all of the drains shoveled out and cleared. Um, so we're feeling, uh, I'm, I'm nervous about it, but just because of, you know, we don't want anything to happen, but, um, but we've, we've, you know, we've done a lot of preparation. So I think we're in good shape. Um, and we really just need to get to, uh, the spring so that we can fix the curbing, uh, in the way that it needs to be fixed and hopefully mitigate that from ever happening again. Um, so we also, uh, learned quite a bit about the landscaping layout that was put in. I, I don't think helps the drainage in that area at all. So we're gonna make some changes there in, in the spring, uh, or, you know, when the ground is back to thawed. But they did a good job today. They did a lot of shoveling. They did a lot of clearing. And, and, you know, we have double sandbags in, in different locations. So I, I think we're, we're good. So.
Just a question on that, Evan. Just because I, um, constituent reached out with some very specific issues relative to the library. And part of it's take, it's been a bit of a process, but we're going through insurance.
Yep.
Right? And I just wanted to like reiterate that for folks who might be.
Right, right.
What is going on?
Yeah, so that is one of the challenges. Um, and when you do a big project like this, um, you know, insurance, just, just like in your house, I guess. They don't just say yes to everything. And then, you know, so we've had, we've had back and forth. We've had to negotiate. We've also had, um, the other thing that people don't seem, don't realize, and I never did until I started doing this type of work, is when you're carpeting a room that big, uh, that's usually a, a run of that particular carpet. And then if you try to get that carpet two years later, the colors don't match. And that's a real, it's a real hangup. Um, so we are, you know, we, really all that's left is the, is the carpet. Everything else is, is complete. There's a couple of built-in, built-ins in a couple of spots, but there, we could operate without them.
And they're coming to get the cabinets on Friday.
Yeah.
Uh, they're coming to get the counters on Friday to measure the cabinets for the program, program room to get those in.
Yeah. So we feel that same way about how long it's been. Um, but it is kind of an arduous task.
Okay, yep. I can direct them to this meeting.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. I think that's it.
Okay. I'll shop vacs at the ready in, uh, in both locations?
Don't need it.
There you go.
No water's gonna be inside there. I am going there immediately after this, so I'll let you know if anything's happening yet.
Spending the night or just checking in?
I thought, I honestly, I thought about it. Um, no, we'll be, we'll be good. Our, our folks will be onsite at seven. So I just wanna make sure that if we do have any melt and, uh, buildup currently, that it's going in the right direction. But, um, we learned a lot, uh, on that Monday storm. Just being in it was probably, you know, it wasn't fun, but it, I think it was probably the best thing that could have happened because we were able to see exactly how that happened the first time. Because honestly, no one had any, any idea where that much water came from. Um, so, yeah.
Good stuff. Well, that sounded really positive that you guys were able to actually see it with your own eyes.
Yeah, we were damp.
Yep. Um, well, thanks for getting out there to do that. Um, so next up, we have correspondence.
I did wanna hit a couple of easy ones or what I felt like were easy ones quickly on this one.
Sure.
Uh, first, I just wanted to, um, thank Mr. Brown, our new town council from Harrington Heap, um, who made a donation to the Grafton Food Bank over the holidays. I felt like that was a really nice gesture on, on their behalf. Um, we had received a correspondence from, uh, Mr. Carroll, uh, regarding concerns with Grafton Upton Railroad. And that was one that, um, I read through the materials that he provided, but it wasn't something I had a chance to do any real additional legwork to look into, um, since we received his correspondence. But improving the town's relationship with Grafton Upton Railroad has been one of our goals. Uh, it looked like we may have been making some small progress, progress there prior to, you know, some recent turnover at the, at the top level over there. Um, so even beyond the issues that Mr. Carroll, uh, outlined in his email, it's, I felt like it's probably a good idea, uh, for the board to reach out to Mr. Deli Pescoli, um, and see if he has an interest in coming in and, and, um, getting back to us trying to further that, that relationship anyways. But, um, you know, I don't know if anybody else, uh, had any other comments on, on Mr. Carroll's email. Um, but just, it might be something worth considering for a future meeting.
Uh, yeah, I had some concerns about that myself. Um, and I think, uh, a simple conversation, uh, would go a long way, um, and help, and help and address some of those concerns. So, um, yeah, just for the publics, uh, this was about inspections and, uh, sort of operations at the rail. Just making sure that we have good communication between them and us and, and our public safety officials. So, yeah, that, that makes a lot of sense to me. Uh, any other correspondence anybody want to bring up?
Uh, yeah, a couple of things, uh, again, on the GRR, I would, would be interested in an update, having them come in and definitely update. And do we, are we doing the hazard plan and the Flint Pond testing? Is that kind of happening?
Um, I, I don't know top of mind on the Flint Pond, uh, testing. I'll have to follow up with Conservation. Um, when that was originally raised that the Grafton Upton Railroad, um, asked me anything type of, or outreach we had, we weren't finding where that had been done in the past or where it was mandated to be done.
Okay.
Um, that said, I, I have not followed back up with, with Conservation since that conversation, so I will do that. Um, what's the second part of the question? Oh, the safety plan stuff?
E- well, yeah, I think there's like something about like, there should be a, I think, five-year hazard plan or something.
So I think that our, uh, chiefs have been in contact with, with, um, Grafton Upton Railroad. I don't think that they're following exactly what that hazard plan needs to be as far as the full update and the quarterly safety meetings and all of that. Um, it is something that we, uh, we have flagged as something that needs to be addressed or rectified. Um, and I can follow up with the chiefs about that.
Okay.
Um, and make sure that we're on a track to, to have rectified that problem.
Okay. And we'll invite them in just as, for an update.
Yeah, I know that.
GRR that is.
Prior to COVID, they were doing it with some regularity. Obviously, I wasn't here, but I, I anecdotally through the chiefs, they had said, yep, we had, you know, multiple trainings and they felt confident that they, that they knew what was happening and what to do. But I, I think that that tapered off and then when they had turnover at GRR after COVID, we, I just don't think anybody really picked it back up, but.
So we've also had a lot of, a lot of turnover and I think, um, now is probably a good time since we do have, uh, quite a few new police officers as well as a lot of, uh, additional on-call fire department. Just to refresh everybody in terms of what those plans look like.
Yeah, I think, I think that all needs to be kick-started.
Yep.
For sure. And I take, uh, you know, I appreciate Bob's correspondence and, and I think that was very timely. Um, just as an aside, uh, we applied for a grant with the town of Upton for a new foam trailer. Specifically for, uh, Grafton Upton Railroad, uh, type incidents. We have a foam trailer. Um, but the foam is, uh, PFAS. So, you know, if we can avoid exacerbating the problem, we would like to do that. So we, we did, uh, do a joint grant.
Great.
And so actually Joe Laden, former planner of, uh, Grafton, had approached me to see if we could do a, a joint prospect. And, uh, so hopefully we get that money and another thing off the list, but.
Great. Another question I have, just, oh, sorry.
No, go ahead.
Um, we've got a chance to meet our new council or at some point?
Yes. Um, and so we can, we can, um, either have him, him or them, it's really, it's two Chris's. Uh, have them come in, uh, to a meeting and sit down, or we can do some other type of meet and greet, um, whatever the board's preference is.
Coming in or even via Zoom just to put a name to a face and here's a little bit about them. Cause I don't think, I don't know, it seemed to get a lot of information. Um, that'd be great. And then the last one for me is, um, Mr. Bruni's correspondence relative to Building Department. I know one thing, an email that we got from you, Evan, was, you know, answering some of the questions. Um, so that was helpful and you haven't set that out or that was just like a.
No, so that was, so Mr. Bruni wrote to you folks.
Yeah.
I then directed mine back to you.
Yep, yep.
Um, cause I, I, one thing I didn't want to do was, I, I'm not debating anything that Mr. Bruni has said. I'm just trying to add context and give you what I, what I think on the matter. Um, and there are clearly a couple of things in the, the twenty, somewhere in the twenty-three questions, and I'm forgetting which ones, um, you know, that just aren't really, they're not in my bailiwick. Some of this is and some of it, you know, is really a question I think the board would need to answer. So, um, yeah.
So, I mean, a couple of things relative to this particular issue that I know of that there were some things that were concerning in terms of how things played out with information given to outside parties and whatnot. Um, so I don't know how we or you want to either, not so much proceed with this, but there are some issues. I hear a lot of concerns relative to that department. I understand it's a department where, when you're dealing with the Building Department, you're usually up against it and you're trying to get something done. So I get it and they have to abide by their rules and, and follow them, obviously. But I do think that, um, I, I'm glad in some ways that Mr. Bruni has brought this up and that perhaps we can address the department and the, or the perceptions of that department by residents and/or contractors, builders, et cetera, some of which may be right and some of which might, may just be the, you know, the cost of doing business. But, um, I don't know how we wanna try to proceed, I suppose, with, with this. Proceed, I suppose, with with this.
Yeah, makes sense. Um, I guess uh, I just wanna be sensitive to um, if we're gonna be discussing. Um, you know, building department, building inspections, that sort of stuff, um, let's have them in for the conversation. Um, but I, yeah, um, totally agree with what you've said so far. Any comment on sort of uh, yeah, either the uh. Yeah, that topic or um, the more specific topic of uh, the communication from Mr. Bruni?
Mr. Chairman, I, you know, I I think that we can. I think that we can discuss. Improvements or whatever in the building department, but. I think a lot of it's day-to-day stuff, and it's really not in our wheelhouse. You know, we received a letter from from a gentleman. He was not happy. You know, I would welcome him in here to to talk with us about this. Um, but. And and work with the town administrator to try to resolve the situation. Um, but as far as, you know, as far as the building department, that's, I I consider it day-to-day stuff and it's not. It's not in our realm, but but if uh, Mr. Bruni wants to come in and explain what happened or what took place. We have information that that took, you know, that we know about, talk it out, get it, get it out of the way, you know, I. I think that's the only, that's that's the way I'd look at it and and, you know, it's a better way of getting everything out, so. I don't know.
Um, uh, just so from my standpoint, um, uh, I understand what you're saying about the day-to-day.
Yeah.
Um, uh, but on the other hand, I do, um, if we're getting, I guess, similar commentary. Um, I think it's reasonable for us to have a conversation about it and um, ask for it to be um. Managed or addressed.
Yeah, and that's why I said work with the town administrator too.
So. Uh, so that makes perfect sense to me, um.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I agree. We have an obligation to address.
Mr. Alama.
Thank you. You remembered. I think we have an obligation to address it day-to-day or whatever.
Yeah.
We have some things to talk about. I agree with Anne Marie too.
Yeah.
So.
Okay, um, as far as Mr. Bruni's communication, um, yes, sir.
Uh, you do have a hand on Zoom. It is Mr. Bruni.
Uh, okay, well, if the.
I I would rather have this, and Mr. Chairman. I would rather have this as a, an appointment instead of talking at the end of a meeting about, you know, about this situation, so.
Okay, well, so here's what I would suggest. Um, we give Mr. Bruni five minutes um, to address the board. Um, and we can schedule it for a future uh, agenda if we want to take it on um, as a more full discussion.
I'd like to hear from him.
Um, okay, so um, is the board done with its discussion though, in in terms of this uh, this particular matter?
Yes, Mr. Jerk and I weigh in before you.
Yeah, of course.
So I manage the building department, um, and you manage me. So what I just wanna remain uh, or just keep in context is. Uh, you know, you have some issues here with with me that you would address with with me. Um, you know, I I would like to have the opportunity to put in place an action plan to deal with. These comments that you're making now, uh, and then if you um, are not satisfied by that course of action. Then I would think you would have, you know, recourse to then, you know, do something different, but really, you're you're managing me. And I'm managing them, and so none of what is addressed in Mr. Bruni's letter is. Fallen on deaf ears, and we have had subsequent meetings and started to discuss. Public perception, uh, how do we change that? Uh, general customer service, how do we change that? Um, you know, I I, at no point in my, my correspondence to the board do I say that. You know, none of this matters. I mean, it's 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 clearly something that that uh, you know, I hope that you feel or know that I'm passionate about. Uh, getting to the bottom of to to the best of our ability, right? It's, I've never worked with a building, I've only worked with one building inspector that. Uh, really uh, had a great rapport with the public. And I can say honestly that they did not do a very good job as a building inspector. Um, but that doesn't mean that we can't provide the best customer service possible while also telling people things that they don't necessarily wanna hear. Right? Um, and so that that would be my request of the board is to pursue it in in that manner.
Yeah.
Um, and and obviously you need to hear from from Mr. Bruni. I'm not dissuading you from that in any way.
Absolutely. Um, so uh, if the board's amenable to that, then um, rather than scheduling a sort of a. A specific agenda item uh, for us to um, well, I guess the. We would schedule something for Evan to present to us what the um, action plan would be, to start. And then go from there. Uh, that makes sense to me. Any uh, concerns about that? Okay. Um, then what I would say is uh, let's bring Mr. Bruni in. Good evening, Mike.
Good evening. Everyone hear me okay?
Uh, we sure can. Um, can I ask you to uh, keep your comments to five minutes? I know it is a uh, complicated topic with some history. Um. Uh, but uh, if you could keep your comments to five minutes, I'd appreciate it.
Definitely, definitely. I was only planning on having three. Um, so Mike Bruni, Creeper Hill Road. And really starting off by, thank you for just the opportunity. Um, and I'm just looking for a a timeline. You know, I heard about there's something that. Uh, the town administrator is gonna do and then present to you all, so I just wanna be kept in the loop. Uh, with with that, you you wanna meet, I'm open. You wanna do timeline, uh, I'm I'm open to that. Um, at this point, I'll just kinda uh, state what I uh, wrote. Uh, knowing that I would only have three minutes, and then we go from from there. So I'm Mike Bruni, a resident of Grafton since two thousand and six. Um, and I honestly do not know what steps that I should really uh, take. Take, my my next step should should be, um, and I feel I've been wrong while selling and buying my home. You already know, I've been here since two thousand and six. You already know, I've been, I've I was instructed to to demolish and rebuild my basement. A monetary expense of seventeen thousand five hundred dollars. Um, even though that was in August twenty twenty-three, when it went, when I went to sell my home. Even though that same basement in its same condition was already inspected in two thousand and seven by the same building inspector. In which I've been paying taxes for a finished basement and half-bath since two thousand and six when I bought the place. And going back research since nineteen ninety-five, taxes have been being paid on this. Uh, you already know, current building inspector meddled uh, with my purchase of my new home by telling the seller. Of said property that I received a letter from the town regarding the basement at my old property. Uh, quote, we we give out these letters all the time. We just gave one to fifty-nine Samuel Drive. That's my old address. What you don't know is 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 the trauma this situation has caused me and my family since August. What you don't know is my feeling of powerless, powerlessness as a citizen. Who was constantly put in a position to carry the burden of proof. What you don't know is I'm not the only one that this has really happened to. There are a number of people in our complex. Of Lord Vale Acres in which I was able to to connect with, and there are plenty of stories. Uh, what you don't know is the lack of trust I have after uh, asking one of our town adminis- administrators to keep information and confidence. Only be in the room as that confidence was shattered. So the things that I'm asking the town for are three things, and I don't know where to go from here, the steps in order to. Is, one is I would like my money back for for the basement. Two is answers to those questions that I sent out. Uh, either answers or or access to those who can provide the questions, um, answers to the questions. So we can increase transparency for citizens as homeowners. I did look into homeowner associations. They're either for elderly or therefore. Uh, focused on low income, but I just don't know what to do. Uh, third, I'm asking that we fix the broken circuit breaker. This is the limit of my construction talk. Um, and stop surges of unwa- unwarranted power by changing the head building inspector role to one that is three-year temporary position. Instead of one that you can hold for life. So in closing. The culture of any organization or town for that matter is shaped by the worst behavior the leader and citizens are willing to tolerate. I am asking you to help me make change. I look forward to hearing what my next steps um, should be. Uh, based on your town process and procedures. That's what I had prepared, so thank you for the time.
Thank you so much, uh, Mr. Bruni. I really appreciate the uh, comments, um, and. So at this point, um, are there any additional uh, public comments?
You have no other hands on Zoom.
Adam, public comment?
Hello.
Good evening.
Adam Ray, forty-two Folet Street. Um, I am also a cell tower expert now, after all these meetings, so. And the ones in Sutton that went on for two years too. We shouldn't forget about Sutton. Um, just some thoughts. So some thoughts on the twenty-one Folet Street site. Our town's past planners and council has stated the feasibility of this site to meet any perceived needs of the town of Grafton. Our, currently, our conservation department has said although difficult, it is possible. Our consultant for wireless service has stated it is technically feasible at this site. The tower's height. May not be tower taller at this site, uh, because of the way that uh, the waves bend around the hills. And any small gaps that can be filled in, so says David Maxim. Um, with power and access already possible, possibly available. It is a much better and less intrusive site than cutting into open space for two thousand feet and erecting. What I believe to be possibly. A hundred and fifteen feet over the top of the ridge line, the ridge top of the hill. Uh, that's on, based on their numbers off of their building plans. Um, they lowered the tower's height by fifteen feet, I believe, from one seventy to one fifty-five. Um, but that's irrelevant because they get twenty feet for free. If they want it, they don't have to ask permission to get it. They just put it up there with another arrays, another four antenna array on that. So that's six-foot arrays, maybe twenty of them, four, 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 four. Um, so we're looking at a hundred and fifteen feet over the top of Easy Hill, which is protected view shed by the town of Grafton. Um, as far as their view shed simulations, um, they had a lot of problems with them. They were flown inaccurately. I don't believe they've given this town an accurate picture. And I don't believe they wanna give this town an accurate picture of how intrusive this site's gonna be. So if there's any way that the twenty-one Folet Street site. Is feasible, I think it should be seriously considered to to scrape out a half an acre for a cell tower. While that's not a perfect site, and you may say it's in the same neighborhood. It is gonna make a world of difference, and it's also a site that's also an industrial site. It has two industrial sites on it. I don't know about the well, but the solar arrays. Worked with conservation, raising the fence up, working with the possibly endangered species and get that project done. So I think they can get this project done too, because the new, you know, the site of fifty-eight is not flawless either. It's gonna be pretty intrusive. So I think uh, if it's possible, I would like you to seriously consider the alternative site. Thank you.
Thanks so much. Appreciate it. Okay, uh, anybody on Zoom?
No other hands on film.
Great. Uh, let's see, we have meeting minutes?
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Foley.
I move the board vote to approve the meeting minutes from December fifth of twenty twenty-three as written.
Second.
I have motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Foley.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
Oh, hang on.
We skipped over resignations.
Oh, we did? Uh, okay, so let's do resignation.
I rescind my motion.
All right, uh, thanks.
You tried, Anne Marie.
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Foley.
I move the board vote to acknowledge and accept the resignation of Elizabeth Elizabeth Schreiber as library director for the town of Grafton.
Second.
I have motion in a second. Uh, any discussion? Uh, I just wanted to um, read a quick note from the um, library um, board of dress trustees. Uh, we got forwarded this correspondence from them um, with regards to Ms. Schreiber. Um, and I don't think that I could uh, say um, a word of thanks better than they did, so I'm just gonna read it. Uh, dear Beth, on behalf of, in this case, it would be the select board. Um, we'd like to acknowledge your uh, recent resignation as library director and thank you for having served tirelessly in the role since twenty twelve. The trustees appreciate your many years of commitment and staunch advocacy for excellence in our library's collection and programming. Thus making ours a model for other towns to follow. More recently, your efforts with renovation and expansion of the library and your role as director and as a member of the town's library planning and building committee. And trustees' policy subcommittee have been outstanding. You also guided the library through the challenging COVID restrictions, both in the temporary library and also the new expanded library. Your assistance to the trustees through countless meetings, budget cycles, grant opportunities, policy discussions, and assuring. Proper staffing has been exceptional. Uh, with deepest appreciation, we wish you your best in your endeavors. So thank you so much for the uh, board of trustees for that uh, communication, and thank you so much, uh, Beth, for your service to the town and. Um, yeah, that uh, the expanded library is uh, will will just serve as a, um, you know, uh. Kind of a a marker of Beth's time here. She was just such a a huge advocate of that and um, really had an important role. In that expansion, so. Um, with that, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 What was the motion?
I made the motion to accept your resignation.
Sorry.
Now we'll take a motion to adjourn. Just one of those nights.
Mr. Chair, I move to adjourn.
Foley. Do I have a second? I have motion in a second to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.